All right, the time is now 5:02. I'll go ahead and call the special meeting to order. Real call has been taken and we'll stand and do the pledge of allegiance. All right. So now we're on to item three, which is public comment. Public comment portion of the meeting is set aside for the public to address the body, the board as a body. It is not time for board response or public to ask questions. Do not infringe on the right of privacy of others. Please sign in and spell your first and last name. You are limited to three minutes. Any public comments? CNN will move on to item number four, which is a demographic report update. And I'll go ahead and hand this over to Mr. McHugh.
All right, thank you. So we, we've contracted with Matt Cropper and Dr. Jerry McGibben to provide demographic work. They have both provided services for us in the past in the demographic analysis area and in our space utilization. And then the overlap between the demographic information and our space utilization. So this is a great opportunity to, to hear from these folks and to answer questions. They have a PowerPoint presentation and we, we went ahead and copied that for you all so you could see the numbers. I know it's hard to look at numbers on these screens, so there's, it's very much a number driven analysis and, and we're excited to have these two gentlemen with us and looking forward to hearing their reports, so. Matt, Jerry, are you able to join us?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Pat, and thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen like Mr. McHugh said. I have a, we have a PowerPoint presentation. Is it possible to give me the screen sharing or do you guys have it on your machine by chance? It says it's disabled when I try to screen share. You may have to make me a co-host to do. Or yeah, I think I need to be a co-host in order to be to share.
Matt, are these, the screen you want to share, are these pages that are in our document? Are these separate?
They're in your document. I guess I could, I could just go-
You could give us page numbers.
Hi there. I, I could just go through the PowerPoint if you have a hard copy in front of you. We could just go, go through it that way if you'd, if you'd like.
Well, we'll just wait a second. Looks like we're going to get you able to screen share. But just so you know, every person in the room has a copy, hard copy of your report in front of them.
Very good. Thank you. I think if you go to participants, you'll see my, by my name under more. I think you can promote to co-host. That would probably be the way to do it.
We don't have that ability for some reason. I'm not sure why. It's not showing up on our Zoom options, but it's, it's not there. So we'll go ahead and just start screen sharing from, from email.
Jerry, can you hear us?
I think he can, yes.
Yes, I can. Thank you. It's a little distant and echoey, but I can, I can make it out.
Well, I think just in the, so we, we take our time valuably. Let's, let's just start by you directing us to page numbers. And if we find a way to co-host you in and you can screen share, let's go that way so we can get off the ground, okay?
Okay, that sounds fine. We'll just go through and, and do, and you know, do the presentation verbally with, without the PowerPoint sharing. And we can always clarify if, if need be. So I'll go ahead and get started, but thank you for the opportunity to be here. We are here tonight to talk about the results of the demographic study and utilization forecast that we had recently completed. This forecast incorporates the fall 22, 23 enrollment data. And so it is a fresh forecast that it gives you a 10-year glimpse into the future as it's, which is forecasted by our demographers. So I am Matthew Cropper. I have more than 23 years of experience in doing this kind of work across the United States. Worked with K-12 schools. And our specialty is just this type of work. We do a lot of demographic study work. We do a lot of school redistricting and facility planning. And so this is right up our alley, just the type of work that we, that our expertise. We also have some history with Missoula and have done some work with you in the past, in particular, done a capacity study and prior demographic studies. So we're very familiar with the area and the region and, and the, the school district. What you have on the screen is actually the report. What I'm, I am referencing the actual PowerPoint presentation that we, that we've sort of a truncated version of the presentation tonight. But also tonight with me is Dr. McKibben. He is a, we have worked aside alongside each other for almost 20 years. And he has his own business as well, and McKibben Demographic Research. But he's one of the best in the business at doing this. And we, we, we work really well alongside each other because my specialty is mapping and, and data and, and Dr. McKibben is a demographer. And so, and so we work hand in hand on me providing him data and analyzing, interpreting data and him doing the same and forecasting population and enrollment as it was for the demographic study. So like I said, our, we were tasked to do a demographic study, to update this demographic study for you. And then also I'm going to talk a little bit after Dr. McKibben about utilization forecast. And what that does is basically takes the forecast enrollment and looks at it as it relates to your school capacity and how your buildings are being used. So I'll give you a little glimpse of that at the end of the demographic study presentation. And so with that, I'm going to hand it over to Dr. McKibben and let him take it from here.
Thank you, Matthew. One thing I want to point out before I get into the results of the forecast results. These are forecasts, they're not projections. A projection is where you take a variable, usually year-to-year survivorship, second to third, third to fourth, over a three or four, five-year period, create an algorithm and use that survivorship to literally project into the future. Very quick, easy, simple, cheap. The problem is they're almost never correct. And the reason for that is only a projection can be correct or accurate is that what's happened the last five years replicates itself over the next five or 10 years. I don't know about anybody else, but I'm hoping we don't see the last five years again anytime in my lifetime. These are forecasts, a two-step procedure. The first thing we do is do a full population forecast for each one of your elementary attendance areas, building specific fertility, mortality, and migration models based on the characteristics, dynamics, demographic trends of each area. Each area is unique. We get any data we lay our hands on. Existing home sales, new home construction, birth data, economic development, age structure, which is your probably most important variable. And we use all of this information to build these mortality, fertility, and migration models. The results of that population forecast then used to drive the enrollment forecast. So it's your current and future demographic trends and dynamics that dictates what your enrollment is going to be, not your past trends. Now, anytime you're doing any kind of a forecast, you must have assumptions. These are broad socio-economic demographic parameters, so to speak, that we use in building our forecast. If none of the assumptions are violated, we should be plus or minus 2% over the life of the forecast per total enrollment, about 3.5% at the school level. Of course, the last series, one of the biggest assumptions was we didn't see a pandemic coming. That's kind of really affected everybody on that. So I don't want to go through all of them for point of brevity, but I do want to go through the top three. And these are the ones that have the highest amount of variability. If there's going to be random error in the forecast, these are the three assumptions that's most likely going to cause that. And the first one is B. We're assuming the 30-year fixed mortgage stays between 5% and 7% for the 10-year life of the forecast. Now, this is a very key variable because A, it dictates what your migration patterns are, both internally and externally, and also drives your housing market. Now, a year ago today, the 30-year fixed rate set at 3.8%. This morning, it was 6.45. Gets almost a 2.5-point increase. It's going to have an impact on home sales going forward. And COVID has really, really messed up the housing market. You probably noticed that the builders, anything they've got on, on, on the charts, on the, on the board, they're trying to push through right now. And the reason for that, and you talk to any Realtor in any town across the United States or city, they will tell you the supply of homes in the market for sale right now is at a post-World War II low. One of the big reasons for this is because the elderly stopped moving for the most part during COVID. The backbone of existing home sales is people over the age of 65 downsizing. And why would you move during a pandemic? Leave your friends, family, healthcare system, doctor, support providers and all that. So elderly turnover rates, which should be going up due to an aging baby boom right now, literally has rolled off the table starting in 2020. It's creeped back a little bit, but we're still seeing relatively small numbers of homes being put on the market. So you're seeing not just in Missoula, but, but all over the country, areas where you're seeing, in many cases, unprecedented housing unit building. But at the same time, your total home sales, new and existing, are 10, 20, 30% where they were in 2019. So, and this is a major assumption going forward because after you get past 2025, 26, you're going to have an increasing number of homeowners over the age of 70 in the district going forward till 2033 and beyond that. So you're going to start seeing more and more of these houses go in the market. You see a slight uptick at 62, another one at 65. But most elderly do not downsize till they're in their 70s. It's not retirement that triggers downsizing. It's either the death of one of the spouses or they both lose the ability to drive. Then they have a hard time maintaining any kind of a lifestyle living in that house. And you start seeing more of those homes go on the market. So with an aging population, and this is the trend in the United States and particularly in Missoula moving forward, what is the rate and magnitude of these homes going on the market? Okay, on the other side of the equation, it's the home buyers. Most of these kids today under the age of 40 have seen nothing but 3, 3.5, 4% interest rates. 6.4, 6.5 sounds like highway robbery to them. There was a great piece on CNBC just a couple of weeks ago. If you bought a $400,000 house a year ago and tried to buy the same house today, the increase in interest rates would cost an extra $800 a month in a mortgage payment. And that's going to put some pressure on the supply side. If it stays above 5 and below 7, we'll have a halfway healthy housing market. I don't think it's going to go below 5%, not with Jerome Powell keeping us throwing the gas. Hopefully it won't go above 7. Okay, we did touch that briefly last year and the housing market really almost collapsed. The next assumption I'm going to go over is on the next slide. And this is on the housing market itself. We assume that the district will have 950 existing home sales per year, okay? Right now, this morning, I looked at your, your Zillow sheet, you had about 200 in the market right now. That's about where you should be in, in mid, late April. It should pick up after Memorial Day. Most people with kids, when they move, they move between basically April and August. Makes sense. That's don't pull their kids out of school. Now, your existing home sales, a lot of those people are coming out of apartments in, in the school district. They're staying in the district, but they're changing attendance areas in most part. Your apartments tend to be concentrated in the center city. Your single-family attached homes tend to be more towards the outlying areas, although there are some pockets within the city. This is the number I'm really worried about because it's not so much the demand side, but on the supply side. People putting their homes in the market, particularly downsizers going forward. So this is, this is probably the number we want to keep number, the most look at as we're going forward doing the evaluations. Again, this 950 is an average, okay? The next one's on the next slide. And that is we assume the district is going to have an average of 130 single-family housing units constructed per year. Now, you should probably make a little typo there that probably going to include some apartments in there too, because you have a lot of apartment building going on in the, in the district. And while I'm on that point, I, I do want to make a very, very important distinction. There's a variable in the market we call housing tenure. Owner versus renter. They have two completely different dynamics, okay? Owners tend to be older. Because they're older, they're wealthier, have completed their family formation in most cases, and move an average of 14 years. Renters tend to be younger, single, still having kids. We call apartments family formation areas, and they move an average of two years. Now, there's a very, very important number here also called children per household. And there's also another number, school-age kids per household. In single-family detached homes, that number tends to be very, very close together because most people, when they buy their, their new home, have probably completed their childbirth. Might have some preschoolers in there. But it's their school age number and total kids per household, 10-year-olds are close together. For apartments, there's a wide gap. You see this in some of the, the population pyramids in the report. You'll have an apartment area, that's where, you don't come out of college and buy a house, you're in an apartment. That's where you tend to start your family. So you see a lot of kids in apartment complexes, but a lot, the majority of, in most cases, are preschoolers. But most people don't want to raise their kids in apartments. So if they have the economic resources to do so, when the oldest one gets to be about five, six years old, they're looking for a house somewhere in the school district or suburban areas. So you'll see a lot of zero to four-year-olds in an apartment-dominated area, but they don't show up in school five years later because those parents have moved out to houses. Again, in a major metropolitan area like Missoula, usually the other areas within, within the school district. I, I don't think that the district's going to have a, any trouble making this 130 single-family homes or, or housing units in a year. It's 1,300. You, you went up about 2,300 housing years in the last decade. So I think it's 130 is a very, very safe assumption. The 950, that's going to depend on the pace and magnitude of early downsizing. Next slide, please. The aforementioned population pyramids. This is a graphic description of your age-sex distribution. Age-sex distribution is your number one predictive variable, population will change. Here's an example. This is the US from 2020, I think is the next slide. The zero to four, that's your preschoolers. Five to nine is elementary, 10 to 14 is middle, 15 to 19 is high schoolers. 20 to 34-year-olds, we refer to as family formation ages. 80% of all births occurred women between the ages of 20 and 34 years old. Despite what you've read in the popular press, fertility rates in this country have not changed that much in the last 50 years. They've stayed in a nice, tight 15% band between 1.6 and 2.0 children per woman in her lifetime, and some variations. I worked out the bottom of that trend right now, too. It's a national trend of about 1.65. But when you see changes in an area's number of births, it's usually not due to changes in the fertility rate, it's due to changes in number of women in prime childbearing age. And that's a very key factor for Missoula. 35 to 54 are the ages where most people have kids in school, okay? 55 to 69 are the ages we call empty nesters. Now, this is where it gets confusing for people. You get the Smith family down the road, lived in the same house for 20 years. But 10 years ago, there was mom, dad, and two kids in that household. Today, kids have grown up, graduated, going off to college. Mom and dad's still there. So same house, same owner, same residents, but the household size has been cut from four to two. You know, that's the dark side of the equation. And there was a lot of empty nesting going on in Missoula in the last 10 years. Like the rest of the country, the persons per household in the city and the district dropped. You went from 2.22 in 2010 to 2.19 in 2020. Now, .03 doesn't sound like a lot, but a real crude measurement here when you're looking at household size, 2 point, whatever it is, mom, dad, whatever the point is, is kids. If the household size had stayed the same in 2020 as it was in 2010 for the district, that would have been 930 more people. The majority of those would have been zero to 18-year-olds. So this change in household size, this empty nesting is a very, very key and frequently overlooked demographic variable. And then finally, 70 and plus, we call the turnover population. This is where most people start to downsize. You start seeing downsizing start in large numbers in the late 60s. It's now tripped into the early 70s to mid 70s, people living longer. Spouses both, both staying, living longer, want to stay in the same household, live in the neighborhood. Most people like where they're living and don't want to move. So, but you really don't see large numbers of turning over now until early to mid 70s. And again, it's the death of one of the spouses or they both lose the ability to drive. Now, the next slide, in the next pyramid, this is Missoula in 2010. Now, that large bar there, 20 to 24-year-olds, those are college students for the most part. College students are kind of where they go to school, not where they're from. But even if you pulled the college students out, you'd still see a relatively large 20 to 29-year-old population there because, again, when you come out of college, you get a, move to an area to work. You don't buy a house. In many cases, if you're young, you rent an apartment. Where are the apartments metropolitan Missoula? They're in the school district, okay? If you go forward, next slide, this is 2020. And you can see you still have this large 2024 bubble. But you'll also notice there's a slight bulge now getting into its early 6, the mid 60s. And that tells us that at least the district level and particularly some of your attendance areas, you're going to see an increasing number of households move into the turnover ages. Right now, they're empty nesters, okay? And you're also going to see an increase of households that are empty nesting of elementary-age kids. Need to expand your definition of empty nest. We tend to think of some of the last kid graduates high school, okay? Well, you can be empty nest of preschool, preschool elementary, preschool elementary and middle school. There's a lot of households in the district that have school-age kids in them, but they're middle school, high school. The parents are in their late 40s, early 50s. They're not going to have any more kids, you know? So you're not going to see any more elementary kids come out of those households, you know, probably for the next 20 years. So this, this empty nesting trend, as it goes through the life course, again, a very, very key area. It varies from attendance area to attendance area depending on what the age structure is. A couple of examples here just show how, how different your areas can be. Next slide. This is Jeanette Rankin. A classic suburban pattern, very few apartments down there. So you see older parents, 40s, you know, and the kids they brought in with them. But notice how the zero to four bar is smaller than the five to nine, okay? It's because there's not many people that are having kids, have to move in. So if no one moved into the area, this attendance area would, would have a drop of about 150 kids in the elementary level in the next 10 years. Now, there had been a lot of immigration, a lot of building going on here, but you have to fill in that deficit first. Conversely, on the next slide, here is an area that's Franklin, which is dominated by apartments. And you'll notice the zero to four bar is much larger because a lot of young people, that's where they start their families. But you go forward five years, you don't see this huge growth in the Franklin Elementary because a lot of those households moved to other single-family attached homes in other parts of the district, took their kids with them. So it was much more, much more muted increase. Next slide. My population forecast results. Now, each area has its own population forecast, male, female, zero to four, 85-plus, okay? The next slide is the sum total for the district. And I want to go through how you read this. There's two ways to read this, all right? One is you can follow an age group over time. Five to nine is, of course, your elementary. So it goes from 3,300 to 35 to 37 in 2020. Drops down to about almost 36 and then 35.5 in 2030. Zero, or you follow cohort through time, zero to four in 2010, it's five to nine in 15, they're 10 to 14 in 2020, they're 15, 19 in 2025, and then they're 20 to 24 in 2030. Across the bottom is median age. Again, that's where age, where half of the population's older, half is younger. Missoula, because it has a major university in there, that artificially drops your median age at 32.8. Urban areas tend to be younger anyway because they have some of the young people living there. But it starts creeping up to 34.3. Again, that's due to an aging population. You know, as you go through the next 10 years. The columns at the bottom, kind of splitting the other columns is your, we'll call components of change, your births, your deaths, natural increase, net migration, and change. You'll notice the birth dropped slightly across the 20-year period. Not because of a drop in fertility rate, but more of a drop of women in prime childbearing age, particularly in our college population. Deaths go up, not because of COVID, but more due to a factor of an aging population. Natural increase, which is shrinking, which is happening all over the country. Even before COVID, we already had four states and about 1,400 counties with more deaths than births. Way higher during COVID now, but we're still seeing an increase of ZPG states and counties. Now, if you creeped up a little bit, Matthew, the net migration. Now, this is a net number. Now, if you creeped up a little bit, Matthew, the net migration, now this is a net number. How many people are moving in, how many are moving out, okay? Your biggest non-college in migration flows are people twenty to twenty nine years old. Maybe bring some zero to four year olds with them. Your biggest non-college out migration flows. Is eighteen, twenty two year olds and people over the age of seventy. Now, the the district has just slightly more people moving out than than moving in, okay? The results of the population forecast then drive the enrollment forecast, which is next. Next slide. Okay, now. One of the key points to look at here is. Go back to the COVID year twenty twenty. The district didn't have two hundred and forty four students leave the district. Like most of the school districts in the country, they just chose other educational options, Muslim state put. So the last couple of years, you're seeing a return factor. You've now kind of got back up to where you were pre-COVID, all right? The other factor at work here is you're having um. Increasing high school graduation classes going out. And the analogy I use is a bucket of water. If I have a bucket of water and pouring water in the top, there's a hole in the bottom. As long as I pour in faster, it's going out the bottom, level will go up. But if for some reason, the hole in the bottom gets bigger. It's going out faster than pouring in, if you keep pouring in the same rate, the level will drop. Enrollment works the same way at the district level. What's the size of the K and ones coming in? What's the size of the twelfth grade cohort going out? You can see that the the modest increase in the K and uh one enrollments, particularly after twenty five, twenty six. We start seeing an increase in downsizing. But that is kind of um negated by the fact that you're going to have a progressively larger. Twelfth grade classes going out. Over the last ten years, you've averaged about oh eight hundred and fifty. Over the next ten years, you're going to average about about nine hundred and fifty. So you have a hundred more kids graduating out each year than you had in the previous ten years. You would need a hundred more coming in as in migrants and births to make up for the shortfall. So that's why you see um uh kind of a stabilization. One exception, of course, being, you know, twenty nine, thirty, you up a hundred and thirty students. Well, the reason for that is. You have an abnormally small twelfth grade cohort of nine hundred and twenty four kids going out the year before. We call it one year abnormality. It's not really a trend, it's just a freak occurrence of the numbers. Um, K five, uh basically stable till about again twenty five, twenty six and twenty seven. Then it starts going up as you see more and more of the existing empty nest homeowners start to turn over their homes. Creates a bit of a wave in your enrollment and starts going through and towards after twenty thirty, it starts affecting your middle school enrollment. And that's, I did that in twenty minutes, Matthew. That's pretty good for me.
Yeah, absolutely. I I think before we go to the next uh section, talk about the utilization forecast, do you think we should? See if there are any questions about the demographic study?
I I I do the utilization first.
Okay. Okay. We can go um go to the utilization forecast. So if you go to the next slide. You'll see that um just a little overview of what a utilization forecast is. So. This takes Dr. McKibben's uh forecasted enrollment. Uh, that by school and by each uh elementary, middle and high school level and compares that to the capacity of each building. Um, and then also that rolls up to the district total and also for elementary, middle and high school. Um, it's a really good way to kind of look at the forecasted growth. Uh, with through a lens of school use and school utilization. And so it's really good and it helps give you indicators and maybe uh. Suggested and depicts where you may be able to, where you have imbalances in utilization, where you have overcrowding. Where you may be able to make uh uh changes to try to balance out utilization. Um, or or whether that may not be an option. So if you go to the next slide, you could see how this utilization forecast looks. And you see that we apply a color key. To each uh cell and and basically the color key, a- anything that is in the deepest green. It goes from uh from underutilization all the way to overutilization. So the deepest green is the lower utilization side. Of the scale and the deepest red is the over. And so under sixty five percent is the deepest green. Over a hundred and five percent is the deepest red. And um so so ideally, the district would want to be somewhere in that light green. The the sort of the green, uh the light, the lightest color green or that pink color. Somewhere in that range is probably ideal. But you start getting up to the higher side of that pink. Uh, up close to ninety five, you start, you know, it may be suggesting that uh you may start feeling pressures of enrollment. And so looking at this particular slide, this is your elementary school or your elementary schools. And you could see across the board that um I like to first look at this elementary school total. So all of the elementary seats. All of the students that are forecasted, and if you're just looking at uh all of Missoula as a whole for elementary use. You're really in that light green, that eighty percent, high seventies. It's really a a a good number and and this the. The forecast uh, this this utilization forecast uh suggests that you probably don't need to add. Uh, much elementary school capacity to the district because you're operating efficiently right now. And then you're not going to, we don't see any overcrowding in the um. In the out years of the forecast. But there are some imbalances. You see in some places where you have the dark, the deep green. And such as Lowell, that has a little bit of underutilization going on. And then Paxton is on, is is nearing that darkest red. It's a ninety six. And it gets up into the hundreds, up to a hundred and three at the end of the forecast. And so. Those are the ones that I kind of, I always look for the district total. And then I look at individual schools. And then I start to look at where there may be adjacencies, where there may be able to be some adjustments. To make all of these green or light pink or, you know, another thing that could be considered to help relieve. Capacity is things like program adjustments and things like that that may be causing, if students are coming into a school from out of zone. That could help provide relief to capacity. So um. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see how middle schools look. And you could see middle school is a little bit different of a picture. You're in that light green, you're hovering around eighty seven and ninety two, and then you go back down to ninety. So you're you're right, you're you're in the comfort zone, but you're getting, you're close to. Getting on the high side of utilization. And then Washington Middle School has a little bit. Uh, you're right at a hundred and and getting over a hundred percent. Um, as the forecast matures and as time continues on. So Washington Middle School is one that I would see. As one that that needs to be potentially looked at to provide some uh capacity relief. And but you got to be careful not to just shuffle all the students to one school like Meadow Hill, because then you may make Meadow Hill overcrowded. So you want to try to accomplish the any any issues or could uh challenges that you have without overcrowding. Uh, or creating an issue at another building. And if you look at the last one, you'll see your high schools. And this shows your high schools are the most, the ones that are the most pressed for space. And uh the forecast does show growth. In high schools, uh and so your um, your your high schools are the ones that that we see as. Uh, you know, maybe needing to be addressed in the out years as it relates to potentially uh. Depending on how things go, it's potentially adding space to the dis- to to the high schools. Not talking about a new high school, a whole new high school, but maybe adding some space. One of the things to note with this is that Sealy Swan is included in here and Sealy Swan has is 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 really an outlier. It's not. It's it's a rural school. I've been out there and it's um, you know, it's really not. Uh, an option for sending students to because it's on nearly an hour drive uh out of town. And so, but if you take that out of the picture, then his utilization probably be in the deeper, deeper pinks and. Um, for the high school total, you'd be up in that, probably the, not the deepest red, but the second deepest red. So high school is one to keep an eye on and potentially make some adjustments to help provide some relief to Big Sky. Um, in 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 the out years in particular, looking at as you get up, it starts to get over thirteen hundred students. Um, if you look at the, yeah, and and that's really all I have for the utilization forecast. I think with the next slide is a. Is just a questions placeholder. We do have other tables and information at the back of the forecast presentation. But with that said, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
Uh, yes, I had a question about one of, a couple of your assumptions that you didn't actually go over. But you mentioned that if there were charter schools being built, that that might change your. Um, assumptions and we're having two bills in our legislature right this minute that want to build charter schools. And then the other assumption, uh the other thing that I found that I just couldn't understand very well, I think it's just my head. Uh, later in the report, you have some in-out tables. And I kept losing which is the in part and which is the out part. You have a diagonal line going across, if you could explain that.
Oh. Yeah, um, certainly, that would be the live attend. Analysis. I guess if you could go to, uh, could you go to slide thirty four in the presentation? Um, or, uh, yeah, if you could look at slide thirty, uh, slide thirty four in your handout too, since you have a packet in front of you. You'll see it kind of gives, it's called interpreting live attend matrices, and it gives you a little overview on how to read these things. Um, basically. What this um. Shows is the, it's a comparison of students living in a zone to students attending school. The 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 school, the zone that the school is designed for. Um, and if you look at the green diagonal, that represents anybody who lives in a zone and attends that school. So if you look over the very top, like left to right, that's the, for elementary school, it tells you how many students live in each zone. And if you go and if you look at that downward, you could say like, uh, let's just look at like, um. Uh, Lewis and Clark, four hundred eighty one live in Lewis and Clark, but three hundred eighty three. And if you go, if you track it down, three hundred eighty three attend Lewis and Clark. Five, if you look right above that, five students go to Hawthorne, four go to Franklin. So you can kind of see. Um, uh, and the forty one go to Paxton. So you could see kind of like where students are attending that live inside a zone. Another way to look at it is if you want to look at, um, say, uh, rattle, uh, let's see, let's look at another one, but just Hawthorne, for example. Hawthorne has four hundred and three, if you look on the left side, enrolled. And then if you track that table, that that line, that row to the right, you'll see ten. Of those four hundred three that enrolled live in Chief Charlo. Two of them live in the Jeanette Rankin zone. And so you could track it that way as well. And then. To the, all the way to the right is a sum of everything that's not green, everything, those are students that live out. Of z- of the zone, but uh but attend in. And then the bottom is 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 the live in, attend out. In most cases, these numbers balance each other out and 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 you'll see sort of a a wash. But another, in many times, you will see a difference in the more kids coming in than going out. And so this is just the way that we track mobility to understand how many students are tr- traveling in and out. And it helps us correlate census population totals by via the live in numbers with the with uh. Census population totals with the numbers that live in a zone. Because sometimes enrollment doesn't necessarily reflect how many kids live in the area because, you know. Uh, as this, as this demonstrates, yeah.
Trustee Mercer.
So to keep that going with a concrete example, if you look at Paxton, which is overutilized. But that's a result of not of the boundary, but of people coming in from outside the boundary, right? Because. There's only three hundred ninety eight people in the boundary, which is well under its capacity, but it has. Four hundred and seventy nine currently attending. Is that right?
Uh, four hundred sixty one attending, uh, three hundred ninety eight living, but you. You you are right. In fact, that's what I I have noticed that, and that's something that I identified as well. And that um, there is a uh. A a larger number of students coming in to that zone to attend school there. Um, than there are students leaving. And so, uh, it's but it's possible that Paxton. Could overcrowding or some of the overutilization of Paxton could be resolved by addressing that. And it may be a program that's being offered that's. Uh, bringing students in from out of, out of zone or some other reason. But that that's, that's a perfect ob- observation. And an example of how you could be, maybe look at that at programs and how pro- moving a program to a school that may have available space. May help resolve overcrowding um without having to move a boundary line at all.
Trustee Decker, then back to Trustee Mercer.
Sorry, slightly different topic. It's on P uh. Number seventeen in the slide handouts that we got about the population forecast. And this took me a second and I was confused. And then realized that I think you're only looking at the elementary district here when you're looking at those population numbers. And not looking at high school at all on page seventeen. Because the idea that we've only gained fourteen hundred people in Missoula since two thousand to two thousand twenty five. That just doesn't really align with what I've heard from other economists and elected officials and economic development types. Um, and then the same for the next five years from twenty twenty five to thirty, the idea that our. Net increase in population is going to be less than a thousand people in those five years. I, that just seems surprising to me. And I'm wondering if it has to do with the fact that it's only in our elementary district and not in our high school district that we're looking at. Or how that lines up.
I didn't hear any of that, Matthew.
Um, well, she was asking about um, with the pop forecast, she was uh, she was saying that what what she's heard from other. Uh, local uh, experts and other people who have been just this population discussions in Missoula, there's been more growth. Than what we're showing. And she was asking if this is potentially, if that's potentially because this is just looking at the elementary district and not. The high school district, uh, because of the difference in geography between elementary and high school.
Well, the high school, of course, uh, district would include all of the. Uh, outline K eight feeders, Lolo and the like and all that. This population here is just the Missoula school district, your elementary areas. That's the. The two thousand ten, two thousand twenty numbers are the decennial census ones. So if we were doing a a total one. For the entire uh school district, including the high school area, yes, it'd be much larger. But our focus here is basically working on the elementaries. We factor in, we looked at all of the, your K eight feeders that were coming in for the high school. Which is why you have this large number of uh. Uh, junk from eighth to ninth grade in your enrollment. Uh, in previous studies, and we've done a lot of the uh. K eight districts independently, but the. Uh, the elementary air areas of your your own K eight areas has seventy thousand people in it right now, okay? Um, if you did one for. All the K eights and Missoula, yes, it'd be much higher.
And one final note on that, that Dr. McKibben alluded to in his uh, in his comments was that. The twenty twenty number that you see, uh, we do control. The population total to the twenty twenty census total population results. And so that's that that seventy thousand three eighty is the uh, close to the census total. Uh, twenty twenty population. But to 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 answer your question, yeah, it is, that probably is why you're seeing differences in what you. Have heard or assumed is that this is looking at the elementary district total population in this particular um forecast.
Trustee.
Yeah, it doesn't include Lolo or target range or anything like that. It's uh, those are, admit, those are all. Uh, not included these population numbers.
Yeah, I mean, most notably, it must be excluding Hellgate Elementary, right? Because that's where a lot of part of the, because the growth is different. It's not just the raw numbers, but the growth difference in numbers. Um, just going back to the other one, sorry, back to the U study, I guess I just wanted to. Confirm then that when you're looking at the middle schools, it's different and that the. The in students, let me get back to that, sorry, the chart.
Slide twenty three there.
Yeah, so on page forty, the who's where, the middle school populations. The actual, like, in district. Populations more match the different enrollments. And so that's a place where the physical on the ground boundaries are causing it more. Does that sound right?
Could you repeat that one more time? I'm sorry.
So if you look at page 40 of the handout with the like who lives, is going in and out of district, those have CS Porter at 593, Meadow Hill at 424, Washington at 666. That more correlates with the utilization of the middle school. So it appears the middle schools are more a result of actual boundary lines then, is what I'm getting from that. Is that right?
The, well, the, there's a, you know, the, are you referencing the 6th grade live-attend analysis chart?
Page 40 of the handout, where people live.
This, sorry, this thing.
Yep, the report, not the PowerPoint.
Okay, on the report, let me go to page 40 of the report.
And so it's the thing saying that whether you live in the, how many kids live in those areas?
Right, and so the live-in would give you the numbers of students living inside each middle school zone. And then the enrollment would be on the, on the left side, on the.
Putting that together with the utilization, it appears to me, because it matches up. Like Porter's maybe fine, Washington's way under, Washington, or Meadow Hill's way under, Washington's way over. That fits with Meadow Hill being 424 and Washington being 666. So the boundaries are drawn to just put a bunch more kids in Washington. Is that right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, Washington, but Washington is interesting because Washington has 75 going out and they got 81 coming in. So that's, that's a perfect example of where they kind of, that mobility washes each other out. And they're sort of like, that sort of neutralizes each other. So, you know, Washington, so, but, but there is a number of students coming in and then, and then also students going out. And there are many reasons that they, that they could be doing that. But, but that's definitely something to look at. That's the first thing that we always look at when we look at utilization pressures, is identify students that may be coming in from out of zone and try to control that. Maybe you can control and limit the inflow, but keep the outflow going to help provide relief without even having to look at boundaries.
Trustee F. Garris.
I was curious about your methodology on forecasting. Is that just based on trends and, you know, age trends and student trends for all? Or do you actually look at like, for example, we have a couple large developments of like apartments, condos and, and a few of our spots in town that should draw in a lot of families that I don't feel is reflected in here. Do you go that deep or is this mostly a, just a trending sort of thing?
What, what don't I look at, Matthew?
He was, he was saying that, that it's, there are things going on at the micro level at like the housing developments and activity going on within attendance areas. And is there, you go, are you looking that, that deep, diving that deep into yields of developments within attendance areas? Or are you just looking at more overall, overarching general trends?
Well, with Matt's GeoCode, which takes the students down to the, you know, pretty much the block level, you look at yields like that. It's also a great way to pick up what we call the non-public option. You have a lot of kids in the area. Matt alluded to it before. We get a count of kids in the area, we look at the number of school-aged kids. That gives us a really good proxy on who's going to private, who's going to homeschool, going to charters, things like that. So, yeah, we tend to look at, you know, household size is a very, very key variable. But again, it goes back to my earlier comments. Missoula, like a lot of other areas of the country, saw a drop in household size. That's, that's something we take a real, real close look at. The variable that I would recommend looking at, that a lot of people don't, you talk about, well, household structure and size, kids in them. What they're not looking at is how many empty nest households are there, okay? How many households are, are losing their kids through graduation or aging through the life course, going from elementary to middle to high school? So when you tend to focus purely on, well, here's an area that's got a lot of households with young kids in it, particularly preschoolers that are aging in, you've also got to see what's happening on the other end of the equation too. How many are, are aging out? I mean, I always tell people, every, for the, for the district level, every child in the district, grade third and higher right now is gone by 2032, okay? All your elementary kids that are in the school right now are in middle school by 26, 27. Okay, 27, 28. Time is the very, forget about, they're going to age through the process. As I show in the pop pyramid, there's a couple areas in the district where you don't have as many preschoolers as you have elementary-age kids right now. So unless you see households moving in with preschool-aged kids, okay? You're going to see a drop, if you do have some moving in. They go, again, both sides of the equation. My concern is particularly those new apartments they're building there. Particularly in the Lowell area, there are three and four bedrooms, okay? Now, three, three particularly, four-bedroom apartments, the difference between that rent and a mortgage for a 30-year fixed rate for starter homes, not that much different, okay? So if you're going to see more and more houses come on the market, I see a lot of people starting their households in those apartments, then moving to the parts of the district. So that internal mobility is another big factor, I think, these people look at as well.
And then also another thing that we capture, like you mentioned, a, is there an area or a part of the community or zone that has a high yield of students and a lot of kids coming out of apartments, whatever it may be. We do capture that when we do our population pyramids for each area because that gives us a total pop count within there by age. And so that, that helps us identify where we see those dynamics going on. But I think it's important that most people, you know, that we talk to and communities that we, that we present these to, they focus strongly on new home construction or things that are being built. And the things that are shiny and new and it's what they, they kind of, zones their eye on that. And they attribute growth to, to, to that. But the, the key thing with the demographic method that we do is that we're looking at not only that new home construction and kids coming in and/or areas that may be growing, but also the balance of the other parts within that attendance area that may be aging and students are becoming fewer. And so it's trying to, it's, it's making sure that you not only capture the, the new stuff that's happening and/or a lot of hotspots of activity, but also where you have cold spots or things are starting to get cold. And what is that net effect? And that's, and that's the key, the key to, to doing this demographic method that, that we, that we implement.
All right, so we are at time. I'm gonna go ahead and close this out from questions. You will be back with us next, at our next meeting for the boundary study. And so I will encourage the other trustees to take note of any questions they want to ask then. And we will see you guys at the next board meeting. It is now 6:01. Is there any public comment on item agenda four? I am seeing none. It is 6:01. The meeting is adjourned for the special work session. And we are going to take a five-minute break before we start our next school board meeting, regular school board meeting, five minutes from now.
Thanks, Dr. McGivern and Matt. Appreciate the input.
Thank you. Have a good night, guys.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
We'll start shortly. All right, we, it is now 6:07 and I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Thank you for being patient with us. Our last special meeting went over with the demographics. Roll call has been taken and we'll go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. All right, and so now we'll move on to item three, which is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. Is there any trustee who wants to move or remove an item from the agenda? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as written. Moved by trustee F. Garris, seconded by trustee Decker. Any trustee comments? Any public comment on the agenda item? All in favor for approval in tonight's agenda, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present, agenda approved. Onto item four, which is to approve minutes from the last regular board meeting on April 11, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by trustee Wallach, seconded by trustee F. Garris. Any trustee comments? Seeing none, any public comment on the agenda item? Seeing none, all trustees in favor for approving the regular board meeting minutes of April 11, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. We're on to item number five, which is public comment regarding non-agenda items. The public comment portion of the meeting is set aside for the public to address the board as a body. It is not a time for board response or for the public to ask questions. Do not infringe on the right to privacy of others. Please sign in and spell your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Their chair may terminate an individual speaker if the statements are out of order or over three minutes. Any public comment?
We do have public comments tonight. Our first speaker is Alan Alt. And passing, our next speaker is Rebecca Dawson.
My name is Rebecca Dawson, R-E-B-E-C-C-A-D-A-W-S-O-N. I'm coming here tonight to discuss the experience that I have had with Big Sky High School this year with my freshman student. I want to start by reading section two, section two of section two, Senate Bill 99, that says, "Any school implementing or maintaining a curriculum, providing materials, or holding an event, assembly, at which district provides human sexuality instruction, whether instructed by school educators, administrators, or officials, or by guests invited at the request of the school, shall adopt a policy ensuring parental or guardian notification no less than 48 hours prior to holding an event or assembly or introducing materials for instructional use." On October 6, I was notified by my daughter's ninth-grade English teacher that they were reading The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian. She said that she was required to notify me that there was some adult content related to the narrator's discussion of human sexuality. When I asked her to share this with me, she did. And I was sent images of the book, which, in which a boy describes masturbation and how proud he is of it. Again, these are 14 and 15-year-olds. Why is this being presented in a ninth-grade English class? It has nothing to do with human sexuality to read an English book. In the same class, on November 1, the students were given an assignment on micro memoirs. The accompanying handout was pulled from the New York Times Learning Network and had multiple examples of micro memoirs, or these were writing prompts for the students. The assignment was given by a stu, by a substitute and the parents were not notified in advance that one of the examples contained transgender material. When you were born, we sent announcements, name, weight, date, engraved on thick white cards with pale pink stripes and polka "When you were born, we sent announcements, name, weight, date engraved on thick white cards with pale pink stripes and polka dots. It's a girl," we said. We were thrilled. Now, 16 years later, so much is new. The pink was wrong, the name was too. This time, we know it's a boy. There will be no pastel stationery. This time, we were telling everyone face-to-face. He's ours." Again, this was presented in an English class. After I addressed my concerns with the teacher and the administration, the teacher complained to the students in the classroom that she didn't think she should have to tell parents what's happening in her classroom. While this teacher finds masturbation acceptable, she did find it necessary to tell the students not to read parts of a book written by a Holocaust survivor. Apparently accurate historical depictions of Nazis using babies for bayonet practices unacceptable, while 14-year-old boys masturbating at school is perfectly acceptable. On October 5th, I was notified that they would be starting their human sexuality unit in health class. I responded the same day asking to review the curriculum. On October 6th, I was referred to the district website. On the same day, I emailed saying that I would like to know how specific units would be addressed and to please send me any media used in the instruction. On October 7th, I was told what they will discuss and to please reach out with any other questions. My request for media was ignored. Again, on the same day, I asked about media being used. I was told that the teacher will use a PowerPoint and a packet. On October 10th, there was a weekend in there, at the start of the unit, I again asked for the media to be shared with me or I would be forced to opt my child out. On October 11th, the teacher said she would opt my child out. I responded that I was only excusing her from specific units that I have concerns with. The teacher said that it would be too difficult to-
Your time is up. Thank you. Any other public comment?
When does my time start?
When you start your comments.
Okay, you heard what Rebecca said, and I'm gonna follow up with parts, some of the slides from the units. And here's one, and this is what they're teaching our kids. This is entitled Safer Anal Sex. These are 14-year-olds. Tells all about condoms. Safer Oral Sex. Oral sex on a penis, condom, oral sex on a vagina, a dental dam, oral sex on an anus, dental dam, get tested. It's really good advice for the kids. This is a really classic. This is what we're teaching our kids. Do I want a method I can hide? So let's not tell mom or dad. Sometimes, and this is a quote, all the things that I'm reading, I'm quoting. "Sometimes people may need to hide birth control from a parent, guardian, or partner." Wow. This is what is going on in Missoula County Public Schools? Thank you.
Any other public comment? CNN, there, we have oral, we have written correspondence that we have seen. And now we'll move on to item six, which is reports and announcements. Item A is health insurance trust fund report. There's no oral report for that one. And we'll move on to 6B, which is announcements from the superintendent.
Good evening, everybody. Just a few announcements tonight. April 27th, Thursday night, we are having our Inspired Student Awards Dinner at the Doubletree. 6:30 to 8, and I would invite people to come if you're so inclined. It's been a tradition now in Missoula for maybe 10 to 15 years, somewhere in that range. So it's a really nice event, and if you'd like to join us at the Doubletree, you're welcome to do so. April 29th, this coming Saturday, is a double event. The powwow begins at Sentinel High School at noon and goes through the evening, and then there's a recognition of our seniors, our Native American seniors that goes, well, they're kind of combining both events this year. So if you'd like to join us, you could come at noon, you could come about 4:00. It's a seven, eight-hour-long powwow, and it's lots of people, lots of food, and I think you'd enjoy it if you've got the time to do it. So those two events are coming up this week. In addition, I'd just like to tell you that we are, she's sitting over there, her name's Barbara. She doesn't want me to mention her name, but I did. So Barbara is submitting two grants for the district. You're gonna, we're gonna ask you to approve them in June. And both of them are a lot of money, multimillion-dollar kind of things. We think we've got a chance. We're looking for licensed clinical social workers. We've lost a lot of our CST, CSCT services. And through both grants, we think we can provide mental health support, substance abuse support to especially our title schools. One of them is working with the Friends of the Children, the other's working through an Aware Grant. We have two of them present to you. Barbara's gonna make a presentation, so you know exactly what we're talking about. This is the foreshadowing comment. So we're coming to you soon, maybe in early June, late May, with the presentation information and probably make a recommendation. The grants are due in July, and, you know, if they have already been board-approved, it's gonna strengthen our opportunities. They're, one of them is a five-year grant, multimillion-dollar kind of a situation. So anyway, we are, one of them is, we think we are not competing with a lot of people, so we're optimistic right now. But we'll find out, but at a coming board meeting, we're gonna give you the specific information. And I just wanted to mention it tonight as a foreshadow of what's to come. So those are my announcements tonight. Thank you.
All right, so now we'll move on to item seven, which is the consent agenda. There is no board discussion for consent agenda items, as these are routine items. If any board member would like to remove an item, they would need a motion and a second and voted upon to remove the item off from the consent agenda item. Is there any board member that wishes to do so? CNN, so we'll move on to 7A, which is to approve revenue and expenditure reports. We'll have two motions, elementary and a high school. Is there a elementary motion to approve the elementary consent agenda items? Moved by trustee F. Garris, second by vice chair Hobbins. There's no board discussion. Is there any public comments on this agenda item? CNN, all elementary trustees in favor for approving the consent agenda item? Please vote yes by, please vote, I need more coffee. Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Now we'll move on to the secondary recommendation for a high school motion. Moved by vice chair Walker Andrews. Second by trustee F. Garris. There's no board discussion. Is there any public comments on this agenda item? CNN, all trustees in favor, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Motion is passed. Now we'll move on to item eight, which is new business. And we'll move on to finance, operation, and maintenance. Topic one is the general fund update. This is information only. And I'll go ahead and pass it over to Mr. McHugh.
All right, thank you. So the page 30 includes the report. These are the budget and expenditure recaps through March 31st, through the third quarter of the year. The expenditures that I wanted to highlight, there's just a few of them. And what I did is I went back and, and, and looked at our expenditures through this time period in 2021 and 2022. And of course, the 2021 expenditures were, were lower in all these categories. This was the first year of COVID, and we were in remote learning and limited time in classrooms. So that, that, it's interesting to look back and see how those expenditures have changed. First, under the salaries, the certified salaries, because there are larger salary line item, you can see, despite having just one more quarter remaining, there's, there's a gap between budget and expenditures, but we do pay triple checks in June, so that, that gap will be closed. And these expenditures are more in line with what we had expect and more consistent with what we had seen in 2022. In 2021, they were down 1.5 million in the elementary and 1.3 in the high school. The expenditures this year and are higher, as you know, we've been counting on ESSER funds to offset general fund expenditures, including certified staff salaries. So by the end of the year, we'll also make an adjustment to this expenditure item. Same can be said for the paraeducator line item. That's object code 117, about a fifth of the way down. And these expenditures compared to last year are, are up about 200,000 in the elementary, and they're also up in the high school about 100,000. Given the budget amounts, the, it, it reflects the ability to hire staff in comparison to the last couple of years. So it's actually a good sign to see those expenditures up. The same with substitutes. There were very little expenditures in this category, as you know, back in 2021, but more in line with, with last year's expenditures as well. The two other ones to, to really highlight are utilities and I think, and insurance. So these are down below in the spreadsheet and, you've probably noticed with your home heating bills that they're, they're up, and I think they're up about 17% for us. So if you look at the utility expenditures in the elementary to this point, we're 1,870,000. And when we were in remote learning this same time in 2021 is about $600,000. And then last year is $772,000. So we're, we're looking forward to ending the year with a significant increase in our utility costs. On the high school side, similar, but not as, as drastic. The, we've expended 900,000 to this point. In 2021, we were at 650,000, and then 760,000 last year. The insurance piece, you'll see the expenditures. This is our GL insurance, not health insurance for staff, but general liability insurance. And, and we see this pretty, we see this annually, or you do, when we talk about increases. And, and this has been increasing pretty regularly, and in 2021, it was 450, 491 last year, and 580 for 2023. And, and this is for the full year, so we won't see any more expenses. These, these, this obligation's been covered. On the high school side, it's 392, and we were at 300, and then 335 in 2022. Finally, one last item to point out is overtime. Obviously, very little overtime in 2021, when we were largely out of the, out of the school buildings. But, but we do have seen quite a bit of overtime last year and again this year. Really linked to our subs or lack thereof in a lot of areas, so there's, there's been more overtime that's been paid. Finally, under the elementary budget column, near the end, you'll see a transfer to other fund. That's a holdover from an interlocal part of our spreadsheet, so that's, that'll be cleared up and removed when we present at the end of the year. So that's the general fund recap through the third quarter.
Any trustee questions or comments? Trustee Mercer?
What's the 2.5 million on supplies and equipment that's not expended at all?
Yeah, so, so there's a, there's a number of expenditures that, that happen near the end of the year in this category. Some of the expenditures relate to, to purchases, to teaching and learning purchases, to expenditures for curriculum. And also, a lot of times, there's an adjustment here for supply purchases that we've had. So I wouldn't read a ton into that at this point. You'd obviously see on the secondary side that we're, we're right on track. And on the high school side, or in the elementary side, excuse me, then that, that's not likely reflective of, of expenditures we've incurred, but there'll be an adjustment. That's a good, good, good one to point out.
Vice chair Walker Andrews?
Yeah, you mentioned the utilities, and you said something about 17%, and I was wondering how much of that is indeed the increase in cost of gas, oil, et cetera, and how much just this particular winter?
That's a good question. I'm not sure. I do know that the legislature at one point threw, some folks over there were, was looking at some relief for schools as a potential. And, and so this, this didn't, wasn't a phenomenon just in our, in our area. And of course, the weather wasn't a phenomenon just in Missoula. So not sure how much is, is attributed to the weather versus increasing rates, but we knew, do know the rates have gone up. I mean, that's, that's true.
Trustee Decker?
Thanks. Mr. McHugh, I feel like I've asked you this question at some point over the past, but the transportation line item for field trips and student travel, is that primarily athletic student travel? And then does any of that come out of the transportation fund, or is the transportation fund exclusively for getting kids to and from the school day?
Yeah, the transportation fund is exclusively to and from school, including shuttles between programs. The, this is primarily, as you said, activities and athletics.
Do you, do you by any chance have a breakdown, like sport by sport, of that available?
I do.
Would love to see that sometime, if that's possible.
You bet.
Any other questions or comments? CNN, any public comment on this agenda item? CNN, we'll move on to topic two, which is a technology fund update. And again, this is information only. Back over to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right, so not as much to report on with the tech fund. I would just highlight a couple of things on page 32. The, the revenue reflects the levy, that's the annual levy of 850,000. The revenue collected to date does not include May collections, so they'll be approximately half of our budget. So that, that's why there's that difference there. Also, you know, when looking at the minor equipment as, as the tech fund, this really is a replacement levy to help cover replacement costs for computers and other devices. We oftentimes see expenditures near the end of the year in this, in this fund. So this is a fund that can be carried over from one year to the next as well. So those expenditures are typically timed to meet replacement time schedules.
Any trustee questions or comments? CNN, any public comment on this agenda item? CNN, so we'll move on to topic three, which is the transportation fund update. And back to you, Mr. McHugh.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, I didn't do the high school one in the last one. My apologies. So the, the second page is the high school side. The only thing I was gonna add is that the, the revenue to date is wrong. It shows $9,600. The, the actual revenue is 424,000, which is more in line with the half-year collection, so don't panic on that one. Nothing else to add.
On the transportation?
So the transportation fund on page 34, you'll see that this is elementary and high school. The primary expenditure is under that object code 5XX, which is contracted services. So the amount expended represents reporting of our expenditures for our bus contracting services through March 31st. And then you'll see that's the largest part of our budget for this transfer, for this fund.
Any trustee questions or comments? CNN, any public comment on this agenda item? CNN, and now we'll refer to the agenda addendum. The topic four, which is to approve amended transportation route mileage. And this is over to you, Mr. McWilliams.
Yeah, thank you. So if you look at the, the attachment there with the information provided, if you look at the very last page, which is in the far back there, you can kind of, in the middle of the page, in the bold, you'll see miles for first semester and miles for second semester, and then what we've identified as miles for the third semester. and then what we've identified as miles for the third semester. What we're asking is that when we came to the board in early February for the approval of these miles, we had taken the count from January 17th, the second semester. What we've identified over the last few months is our, our special needs routes have increased drastically in route, in mileage, which is what we've identified as a third semester. And I want to correct that number at the very bottom, it looks like 2,320. It's actually 2,206. So that number was corrected because we do have some half-day routes that were counted twice, and some noon routes that were counted twice. So the new number on that is 2,206. If you look at the 2,000, the 2,206, and you deduct what we had for a second semester of 1,896, it's a difference of 310 miles per day. And that's 90 routes. So that's 27,000 miles, 27,900 miles of reimbursement that we potentially could be losing. At 95 cents a mile, that's $26,000, $26,505. So we've learned a couple of things from this. One, we likely will not come back to the board in March, or February. January, February of next year, we'll likely do April, May, like we are currently now, so that we can ensure we get the most accurate reimbursement for the miles we're utilizing to get kids to and from school. So we're asking to rescind the approval in February and approve this new route, mileage route. The other advantage is that these routes go to the Missoula County Transportation Committee, which meet the first week of May. So it's really perfect timing.
Any trustee questions? CNN, this is a full-board motion. Is there a motion to approve the request by administration? Moved by trustee Decker, seconded by trustee Agers. Any final comments by trustees? CNN, any public comment on this agenda item? CNN, all of us in favor for approving this agenda item, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. And now we'll move on to B, Teaching and Learning, the Missoula County Public Schools, School Counselor Leadership Team presentation. And I'll go ahead and pass this over to Superintendent Lodge.
So it's my pleasure to introduce Barbara Frank and Erica Zinn. And would you like to present and introduce the folks who are going to actually make the presentation?
We have three school counselors, one from high school, one from middle school, one from elementary school during the presentation today. There's Kaitlyn Shoal from Rattlesnake, Leslie Jagary from CS Porter, and Heather Williams from Big Sky High School.
I'm sorry, I have to ask you to speak into the microphone.
Yep, you can turn that one on.
All right. Hello, thanks for having us. We are here representing the counselor leadership team. Tonight, we're going to go over what we're doing as a team. We'll talk and review a little bit about our role as school counselors across the district, and then we'll highlight what we're doing at each grade level, elementary, middle school, and high school, to share about how we're addressing needs for student outcomes. So some introductions. I'm Caitlin Sholey. I am the elementary school counselor at Rattlesnake Elementary. We have Leslie here from CS Porter, and Heather Williams from Big Sky High School. So the reason why we're here tonight and our agenda for the evening is to obviously go through introductions. We'll talk about our goals as the counselor leadership team. We'll also review and talk about our goals as school counselor and role of the school counselor, how it has adjusted to fit the changing landscapes across the district. We are going to share about what's happening at the elementary, middle school, and high school levels, and what we're feeling like is working and we're proud of. And then we'll leave some time at the end for questions and comments. So just a little bit of history for the counselor leadership team. We were originally formed in order to create a streamlined communication and collaboration team, also talk about curriculum development across the district in order to teach similar things from the counselor level. As it has evolved over time, we've really become advocates for not only our role as school counselors, but also to address the needs of the students and how we can advocate for the students' needs. And we're seeing a big increase in student need this year and the past couple of years. Yep, and then this is just a list of all of our CLT members. You'll notice that there are names from, and representatives from all the different levels, elementary, middle school, and high school. And this is just to ensure that we have a wide variety of perspectives and that we are able to communicate clearly across the district at every level.
Okay, so overall, the counselor leadership team, we're an advocacy group, and we advocate for this role of the school counselors in our district. Our purpose is to assist our school counselors in improving student outcomes in academics, social-emotional learning, and also career development. We also help guide professional development opportunities for school counselors, and we facilitate communication at all levels of the district. So there are three domains in the role of school counselors, which I mentioned before, academic, social-emotional learning, and career development. The social-emotional mental health support domain has become pretty overpowering in the past couple of years. And it makes it, that makes it crucial that school counselors have appropriate duties in our jobs. So the American School Counselor Association, the ASCA, that their model guides our use of time. And their model recommends 80% of our time be used providing direct and indirect services to students. And that includes direct services, our individual counseling, spending time with students and parents, and collaborating with staff and MTSS teams. So we take a lead role in assisting with data to guide our interventions. A couple of examples of the tools that we use to gather data for students are the Montana Youth Risk Behavior Survey. And this is a self-reported survey that students in seventh through 12th grade take. And it shows us the prevalence of health risk behaviors in our Montana teens. Another one is the Student My Voice Survey, and this is another self-reported survey that students in sixth to 12th grade take. And it gives us data on how students view the climate and culture of their school, and also how they experience teaching and learning at school. So another important aspect of the American School Counselor Association recommendation is around student to counselor ratios. And our school counselor to student ratios have been up for debate recently in Montana. And the counselor leadership team has advocated for keeping and even lowering our ratios. And we've communicated with our district school counselors about the potential impacts that changes would have on us and on our students.
So as everyone here works affiliated with the school systems, we know that the discussion around student mental health needs is nothing new to everybody. However, the current numbers of the trends are really alarming, so we just wanted to highlight a little bit of that. You'll see here, I won't go through all of the data, but you'll see that the rates of depression, the rates of adolescent suicide rates, self-harm, mental health-related emergency department, room visits, and inpatient admissions for youth have all jumped dramatically. I mean, you'll see percentages here from 54% to 60% in recent years. So it's been really, really dramatic. These increased needs have really impacted our school counselors and their roles. So school counselor services have become more on-demand and devoted more to crisis response. We recently just surveyed all our counselors in the district, and 85% of those surveyed said that they could not meet the needs across the three realms. We had talked about the academic, the career development, and the social-emotional, that we couldn't get an even addressing all three of those. And the main reason why was because so much of our time is being pulled into crisis response recently. It's leading to a lot of counselor fatigue and burnout. We're seeing an increased amount of time that our school counselors are using, having to support our staff in the district too, for similar reasons. And that just really highlights a continuing need for effectively addressing the mental health and social-emotional development district-wide of our students. So how is this impacting the kiddos and what we're seeing in our schools? We're seeing new and intensifying issues. The loss of the state mental health funding that resulted in our CSCT, Mr. Lodge just discussed that, and Barbara's grant's going to really hopefully help us address this, but that was a real big hit that we took, losing that CSCT teams from many of our schools. We're seeing a very large impact in student attendance and tardies. The rates of anxiety and grief and loss were dramatically increased, and our staff wellness and mental health burnout. The skills that we're seeing that our students are really lagging behind now compared to before, the social skill development seems to be about two years behind. All that executive functioning and planning and organization, and that school readiness, those skills are really lagging as well. Student resiliency and their coping skills versus kind of, we're seeing a lot of what I call tapping out or falling apart in school. And the study skills and lower academic performance are all things that we're seeing
Okay, so we're going to talk a little bit about what strategies we are using to address the changes and the needs in our district. The first thing I want to talk about is the new whole-child development curriculum for K-8. So we are piloting that this year. It's called Character Strong. Teachers are implementing that into their classrooms, and then counselors are then able to support it and reinforce it on the school community level. Also, in addition, we are implementing research-based policy and training on suicide and threat assessments through the Colorado Safe Schools, University of Montana, and Montana Office of Public Instruction, provide the safest and effective approach to keeping our kids safe. And then we, in addition, are also providing, bringing in Stacy York, and she's educational, educational professional who specializes in training educators on stress management and well-being. All school employees got that this fall. And that's really helping add tools in our toolboxes for managing our stress and well-being throughout the school year this year. In addition, we also have two positions I want to highlight. So Erica Zinn is our student service coordinator this year, and she is helping us with a variety of things. She is helping streamline communication at our district levels for mental health needs in our building. She's also helping design district-wide supports for mental health needs. And something that's really helpful is community engagement and partnerships with community organizations to address mental health and connect our students and families to these organizations that counselors can then connect families with in their buildings. In addition, we have behavior interventionist roles last year and this year, and this is in hopes of helping fill in some of that need of our CSCT program that we've lost. We are unsure of how long the support will continue due to the funding that it was created through, but we are hopeful that this can continue and really work alongside the counseling position as well. So now we're going to go into examples of interventions that are happening at the elementary, the middle school, and high school to really highlight what we're proud of and what we feel like is going well this year. So we'll start at the elementary school. Again, we are using a whole-person development curriculum called Character Strong. Kindergarten through fifth grade is called Purposeful People. And it's really highlighting different character traits each month that students are then able to learn and apply and use in the school, in the community, and in their home. And then in addition to this, we are working on monthly staff wellness challenges. Part of Character Strong has staff pursuits that staff can use as challenges to really work on a goal that, in relation to what students are working on. And then we also, in my building in particular, are really focusing on how we can bring fun and wellness together and collaboration in different, in a variety of ways. So some of that might look like monthly challenges, like self-care bingo, or just getting some more pot licks in and some food to connect with each other and build community. And so another way that we are addressing the needs is we are using the SRSS, which is a screener, a universal screener. It stands for the Student Risk Screening Scale. We are using this three times a year to highlight student needs who, who are exhibiting internalizing behaviors or externalizing behaviors. And this is really a way that we can use data informed decisions on how to respond to our needs. And then I'm going to let Leslie jump in here and talk a little bit more about what
Great. So a couple more things that we're using at the elementary and middle school levels are having groups based on need as far as working on skills, social skills, or academic skills, organizational skills. We also use check-in, check-out, which is a way for students who are in that program to connect with their teachers on a, on a meaningful level, at a meaningful level several times throughout the day. And meaningful work, that's just having jobs for kids in, with adults in the, in the, in the school. And also structured recess really helps for kids who, outside with a couple hundred kids is hard sometimes for some kids. And so with structured recess, we're able to have a more monitored, maybe playing games or playing some type of sport inside. So at the middle and high school levels, one more intervention that we have is a suicide prevention program called Signs of Suicide, SOS. That's used in health classes to teach students how to look for signs in themselves and people around them, friends, family members, around depression and possible, you know, suicidal ideation. Check and Connect, and we already mentioned check and check out, it's up there again, but Check and Connect is a really, a positive way for kids to connect with another adult in the building. It's a little bit more intensive than check-in, check-out, but they spend time with an adult in the building in order to establish relationships. We have a lot of information around meaningful relationships. Even just one or two can really help a kid who's at risk come through and have that positive interaction every day is really, really important.
So at the high school level, we have a bunch of different things going on. A needs assessment is given, providing data that's driven from the students on what would be helpful for guidance lessons for them. And so push-in lessons have been created and given in different topics like motivation and organization, stress management, things of that nature, test preparation, all of that, anxiety, study skills. There's a ninth-grade success curriculum to start the year off strong, happening at a couple of the high schools. And mentoring program that's also taking place in a couple of the high schools that helps freshmen get oriented and pre-teaching expectations and some whole-child development. The Spartans are doing that as well, as Big Sky High School is going to start implementing a mentoring program. So lots of really good things happening. So in summary, we thought we really wanted to share about what we are seeing in the schools, how the landscape is really changing, and how hard our staff are really working to address all of these needs. The current interventions that we're doing across the district are things we're really, really proud of, and we've really benefited from the support of the board and our upper administration in really prioritizing student mental health and the needs that we're seeing. We'd be remiss if we weren't kind of naming the elephant in the room, which is our mental health staff, our burning out. There's a really big need. It's feeling really overwhelming. We're working really, really hard. And just the continued advocacy that you all provide for us is just so valued, and we really, really appreciate it. So thank you all so much. And we're here to answer any questions, if anybody has any questions for us.
Trustee?
Trustee Witcher.
First of all, thank you so, so, so much for the services that you provide for our kids and our community. From the bottom of my heart and so many others, I see the work that you do in our schools, the hard, hard work that takes such heart and such dedication. I have a question regarding, I understand that the frequency of events and incidents is up in your crisis response, and I don't know if you have any specific data to say if it's broad-based, or if we have specific kiddos that are frequently in need of these services? And I'd be interested to see what other districts have done with the frequent kids that are in crisis in our schools and models that other districts have taken with those kiddos.
Thanks. Yeah, I think if it's okay for me to address that, I'll address the parts that I do know and can address, and if anyone else wants to jump in, please feel free to do so. But as part of the counselor leadership team and our surveying of our staff, we are seeing it across the district at all levels. That increase just seems to be coming from every building, every level. We do have some specific data. I know I can speak at Big Sky High School. We've looked at our data on the increase in suicide evaluations, threat assessment evaluations, the number of kids that are requesting to see us for anxiety, grief, all those things. So there is data out there that we can share absolutely to answer part of that question. I think we're always looking and scanning across, ASCA is one really big resource, the Montana School Counselor Association is another, always learning on what are the different models out there. I think our whole-child curriculum that we're looking at developing, and we're piloting that right now, we're wanting to expand that and look at our data and see how the results have shown that kids are really benefiting from that, and it's just showing the need for that. I think we use our multi-tiered systems of support, which is that tier one, tier two, and tier three, and really trying to figure out, how do we not make it so tier three-heavy? I think that's where we're really challenged right now, is that we're drowning a lot in the tier three, and really wanting to kind of do more prevention at the tier one level, which is that curriculum that we're discussing, but also needing the bodies in the building to start being able to deliver those services more. More groups would be fantastic, but we need more bodies in the building to be able to provide more groups. Groups have really great outcome, and we have lots of great data showing that that really helps, teaching those specific skills to the kiddos. Kind of rambling, but does anyone want to add anything to that, Zins? No? Thanks, and thank you for saying that. We really appreciate that.
Oh, I was gonna add one thing quick. Several of our school counselors went to the state school counseling conference two weeks ago, and so it was really nice because we were also able to talk with counselors from around the state who are seeing the same things we are. And so we were able to do some, I guess, sharing, networking, yeah. So that's something we just did too.
And also even within our district, myself and a couple other people from-
Please speak into the mic, please.
Just wanted to make a quick comment. Myself, and we're doing a little bit of like learning and sharing even within our schools in the district. I was at Hellgate today, learning about their systems, their break systems, and their student support services, and then we had several Hellgate employees at CS Porter a couple weeks ago to learn from us, so it was really helpful.
Vice Chair Walker Andrews?
Yeah, I had two questions. One is, you talked about the changing landscape, and you talked about the proportion of depression-related hospital, et cetera. Those are, of course, US numbers, and I guess all I'm just asking is whether ours parallel what you've put in that box. I assume they do, but-
You're talking nationwide versus Montana?
Well, for example, you mentioned adolescent suicide rates had gone up by 60% in the nation, I'm assuming, and that you're just seeing parallel kinds of changes here, correct?
Yes.
And then my other question, I was in a conversation with some people in the last week or two about social-emotional learning, because that's a very in-the-news term, and I was looking at the standards that are listed at OPI for social-emotional learning. I'm asking whether the social-emotional learning is primarily in the classroom, and you're spending more of your time in sort of interventions, small groups, a particular person at that moment?
That's a great question. It's different at different levels. In the elementary schools, I know that elementary school counselors spend more time in the classroom, helping with lessons, correct? At the middle school level, it's a little less, and at the high school level, I believe it's maybe even less. Is that be right? And so, I can speak from the middle school perspective. We do, the teachers do teach the curriculum that's going on. We find ourselves now responding to a lot of crisis. That seems to take up most of our time right now, and that can look like meeting with individual students or small groups of students, but also just keeping kids in classrooms, or helping them get back to class and helping them regulate, and also dealing with a little bit more of the social work aspects of working with students. We do have some social work help at our schools, for sure, but it really does take more than a halftime position or one position per school for that social work and working with families. And so we're finding ourselves doing a lot of that right now.
Trustee Mercer?
Can I just add to-
Yes.
I think too typically a school counselor, if you're seeing a student that's had some distress of some kind, in the past you would do maybe six weeks or so of trying to check, six visits of trying to check in with a kiddo, and if you're finding that after that amount of time that the school counselor is checking in, they're still needing more support, that's often when you consider referring out, that they're needing more intensified support and maybe needing an outside counselor or support in some fashion. However, I think the trends that we're seeing now is that the number of kids needing that, the ability of the families to do that and make that happen, so the social work positions really help fill that gap and also help with the connection to those outside services, but when sometimes those outside services can't happen, because also in our community, we're struggling to provide the staffing for all of those services. Our social workers help fill that gap too, but the counselors are also being asked to fill that more, so we're doing longer amounts of time, meeting that social-emotional dysregulation and that need, and the amount of crisis, say suicidality, grief, threats, anxiety, drug and alcohol use on sight, self-harm, all of those things where we're being pulled into that more and more and more, and the quantity is just going up, that it's taking a lot of our time. So our ability to kind of do that academic support and the career and post-secondary development support is not coming off the table. We still need to meet those needs, but we're struggling when we're having to spend so much time with the mental health stuff.
So two questions. One, sort of how many of there are you? Is there one in every elementary school, or are there different numbers in the elementary schools? And then question two, can you, and you're sort of getting there, can you explain more the distinctions between the school counselors, the social workers, and the behavioral interventionists, and what that intersection is?
Absolutely. I can take the second part if you want to take the first part.
Each elementary has one elementary school counselor, except for any school that has over 400 has a point two. So Jeanette Rankin, Lewis and Clark, Chief Charlo, Rattlesnake have a full-time school counselor, and then another point two, so that's a day. And then every elementary also has a behavior interventionist. And then middle school has, each of our middle schools has two school counselors and one behavior interventionist, except for Porter has two behavior interventionists. And then our high school has four school counselors, a full-time social worker. And then depending upon use of where they put their FTE and stuff, some have a, one has a certified school counselor, I mean, excuse me, a classified social worker. And then Willard has a school counselor and a social worker. So that's, I mean, it's kind of, but generally.
So the school counselor has a lot of hats that they wear, so they're doing, their role is really to do the academic support, the post-secondary planning and career development, and social-emotional support. What doesn't fall under there, I don't know. So I think that's a big part of it. We wear lots of hats. And depending on the levels, you might see at the high school level, school counselors are really involved in scheduling and designing the schedule and making sure that students are on track to graduate and meet their needs and meet their goals, and that they're taking the right courses, whereas you obviously won't see that as much at the elementary. But at the elementary, they might be doing more push-in lessons around thinking about career and different things on their development, and middle school somewhere in the middle. So the school counselors sit on a lot of teams as well, so they'll sit in on a lot of special education meetings, some of the system meetings, the multi-tiered systems of support, things like that, so helping design the systems for the building. And a lot of times they are pretty tight with administration and helping support administration and a lot of decision-making. I mean, the administrators decide, but you're kind of, can be kind of a right-hand person to administration. Social workers in the building will, if they're certified licensed social workers, are doing a little bit more intensive mental health support, but then also connecting the student and the families to outside supports in the community that they might need. So they kind of work in case management as well as doing more intensive mental health support. And then our behavior interventionists are often more classified, certified staff. Thanks. And they will be doing more hands-on, in-the-moment support for students who might be struggling with behavior, but they also might help design behavior plans and support plans for the students so that they can do those learning skills that we need them to do, those sense of being in class, attending, behaving appropriately, those types of things. Anything, anyone want to add to that?
Trustee Witcher?
I have a presumption about this answer, but I'd like some direct input. In talking about equity across the school district, are there certain schools that have more heightened behaviors? It sounds like every school gets a counselor or services based on their population number, but are there schools that you see higher levels of need? And when we're tiering kids in those behaviors, is there congruity across the district when we're tiering behaviors? Does that make sense?
Do you mean like continuity on what would qualify as a tier-two kid?
Correct, correct. Yes. Is it gonna be the same if my kiddo goes to Lowell or to Rattlesnake? And is there schools that have more needs than others? And speak to that a little bit.
So I would say for the tiered part, and I can see you guys whispering, do you-
Yeah, I was gonna add-
Go ahead.
Okay. Good job, thanks. So I interrupted, or I lost my train of thought. So yes, and one of the goals I know of the academic and career service, I mean, community services department, is to have a more equitable services for all students. So we do see some schools that have different needs, and we try and meet those needs differently. And as Barbara, I'm sure, will start talking about, you know, some kids, you have one school that has, kiddos have lots of access to lots of things, and other schools where they don't have as much access, hence why Lowell has our community-school approach, because then now they have access to everything that other schools have access to. So we're slowly working on that. But I know that our district admin really worked hard to share and make it more equitable for our mental health supports in our schools these last three years, and that was a big focus. Hence why we have our behavioral interventionists and our extra social workers that we didn't have before, and how it looks, the balance looks a little bit different at different schools, just depending upon needs. We also have two district behavior interventionists that kind of float between schools where the needs are at higher, and then, you know, they'll go in, they'll have some behavior interventions, they'll put some supports in, and then move to another school. So yes, we're working on that, and we do see it, and we are slowly building, and that's partially what some of our grants are for too, is to make it more equitable access for all families, so.
And I would add to that, that our, we do see disparities in data between title and non-title schools, of course, because they serve different areas of need. So we do use some of our title dollars to add extra supports to our Title I schools. For example, Lowell has an extra classified social worker that they pay for using Title I funds. So we do use some Title I funds to add extra supports to the schools. I think Erica mentioned that Porter has an extra behavior interventionist, and that's all based on the data, that they needed an extra support there at that school where the other schools didn't have the data to support that need. So we're definitely looking at data, but your question as to the calibration across our schools, it's definitely something we need to work on so that we understand what's happening at every school. Sometimes you get stuck in your own building and you don't realize what it looks like somewhere else, and so we've really been trying as a department to start facilitating more learning walks. You heard the counselors talk about doing some of their own more learning walks and looking at the other schools and the systems they're doing. So we're really trying to get our teachers and our mental health staff out to see what good things are happening at our other schools, and to really begin to calibrate across buildings so that a tier-two behavior is a tier-two behavior at every school.
Trustee Decker?
I want to echo the really deep thanks for all the work that you do. It's really important. And I want to invite you to dream for a second. I just wonder if you had the capacity to do the kind of whole-child, whole-school, whole-staff work that you would want to around prevention, what would that look like? So that people can see, because I think we are culturally in a really reactive place where we are all crisis responding, and I think it's hard to get out of that and picture what our schools might look like if we were able to do what I think you're kind of hinting would be a different way if you had capacity. If you could just would dream for a sec.
It's interesting, because when Russ first started, he reached out and asked me a very similar question, and I remember answering at the time that COVID taught us something, because when we went hybrid, it did feel in some ways that really created a lot of struggles, because kids being at home was not great. But in other ways, it showed us that in the building, when the classroom sizes were smaller, and we had fewer kids in the building, and we had the time to address the different needs, it was pretty fascinating what we saw in our behavior data and in the needs of, to what was coming through the doors. So my answer to him at the time was, you know, smaller classroom sizes, higher or lower ratios of staff to students. I would say that would be the same thing for our mental health staff. And then it's time. I think we survey, we just did a survey with our counseling, our counselors across the district, and when asked what was, what were some of the things that would be helpful? It was time, it was systems that are solidified in responding to needs. It was, there was a third one I just had in my brain, and it fell out. Oh, the tier-one, and getting that tier-one really shored up. So that's back to that whole-child development stuff too, is just if we can really shore up all that tier-one instruction, expectations, and support, that would help tremendously, because I think we're reversing the pyramid. The pyramid is supposed to be, you know, tier-three is the bottom of the pyramid, and, I'm sorry, tier-one is the bottom of the pyramid, and tier-three is the top, and it feels like we're flipped over, so. Did you want to add to any of that? A magic wand question, you want to add to it?
Sure.
Yeah, the magic wand question is sometimes something we use with students. If you could wave your magic wand in the morning when you wake up, things would be different in your life. Sometimes they just don't even have an answer, but sometimes when they do, it's really enlightening for them and us. it's really enlightening for them and us. I think, yeah, I kind of want to reiterate what Heather said about, about time. In order to, in order to do things that are healthy and positive for the culture of the school would be amazing. One of, one of the things that's like getting me through this spring, this last push that's always hard for everybody at the end of the year, is helping and organizing 14 of our sixth through eighth grade refugee students, ELL students, on a soccer team. And that's outside of school. But they, they are so glad to see me every day, to ask me what time the next practice is. And we've had teachers and out to see their games on Sundays. And it's been really uplifting for a lot of people. And I think it, it helps the teacher, the teachers come out and they're glad to see these kids having a good time, no matter what their behaviors are and how much they struggle, struggle at school with language or culture. They're out there having a good time through playing games together. And, and seeing their teachers out there support them has just been great for them and for the teachers. So I think doing more things that are inside and outside of school culturally uplifting and motivating. And I think it can help teachers and families and students alike and feeling like they're a part of something bigger.
Any other trustee questions or comments? Vice Chair Hovins?
Thanks, guys. I just wanted to express my deep thanks as well. And, and say that it was devastating for all of us to hear about the crumbling of the CSCT program. And to see what you all have done with what you have is incredibly impressive. So thank you so much for coming to talk to us tonight. And I also don't want you to think that because we're impressed by what you've done with very little means that we don't want to support you more. And I think I speak for more than just myself, but we proudly support what you do. And so please come to us with your needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any final questions or comments? Nope. Just another big thank you from me. So thank you for your presentation as well.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Any public comments on this agenda item? CNN, now we'll move on to topic or to number nine, the Board of Trustees, Topic A, which is the Montana School Board Association Legislative Update by Vice Chair Arlene Walker Andrews. Over to you. And again, this is information only.
Yes. I'm our representative to the Montana School Boards Association. And so I had asked to be able to talk maybe once a month about things that are, that are going on with that group. Right now, of course, the, the School Board Association has been looking at all of the bills that are going through the legislature, trying to advocate for various ones, give information on various ones, and to provide legal help actually to many of the legislators when they write these bills, because they can be more complicated than, than we would ever think. So I thought I would just mention a couple of the bills that are sitting there right now. I think there must have been somewhere between 50 and 100 education bills. And I'm not going through all of those clearly. But I just wanted to talk about a very few of them. One that passed yesterday was on parental rights. Another one that was passed was on exactly the, the rules, so to speak, for informing parents about human sexuality instruction. And I believe 502 was tabled. That one was much more specific. 5, excuse me, 566 was approved. And part of that particular bill was to specify that it's really science or health enhancement courses in which students are either separated by sex or allowed to be separated by sex. It also allows discussion of human sexuality if it's a student that raises the question. And it adds information about annual notice, calendar, et cetera. Another bill that was just passed that's sitting on the governor's desk was 234. And that would open public library, museum, and public school employees to criminal charges and potential fines if what is considered pornographic material is disseminated to students. That particular bill wasn't actually necessary, because the obscenity bills that are already in, in law do that same thing. But this particular one added it in terms of, of school librarians. There are two charter school bills currently being discussed. I thought they were going to vote on them yesterday, but it looks like it'll be a little bit later. One of them, 549, requests charter schools that would report to a commission rather than local school boards. And that particular one, the commission itself would sort of sit a little bit under the Montana School Board Association. And it would have members selected by, two by the governor, one by OPI, one by the head of the Senate, one by the head of the, I say head, the president of the Senate, one by the head of the House, one by the minority leader of the House, one by the minority leader of the Senate, if I got them all. So it's selecting people primarily by people who are elected to the legislature. The other one would ask that anyone proposing a charter school work with the locally elected officials on a school board to decide if you're accountable and authorized. Or if that group isn't available, that may be another elected group. The other one that I wanted to bring up is the donations to public schools for tax credit. You'll remember that's been there. And it was such that somebody could give up to $200,000 and take that much off their tax bill. And last year, it was up to $2 million, everybody throwing in money. And it turned out that the same first two years of this particular bill, more than 60 to 80% of the money that was donated by people went to the same school district. So this year, they tried to make that a little bit less in that direction. It's up to $5 million. And any one individual can donate $200,000. But the bill places limits on the amount a single district can receive. And then the sort of leftover will be divided up among school districts on the basis of other distribution rules for aid to schools. The one that I talked about very briefly before that was going to change school board elections, to move them to November of even years, require candidates to state their party affiliation, et cetera, was tabled. Then it was brought back a day or two ago, and now it's been tabled again. So it doesn't seem like school board elections are going to change very quickly anyway. And then I'll just mention like two more. One is to set up education savings accounts so that families can move their children with special needs to private schools and pay vendors for supplies and services. That's currently sitting in the Senate Finance and Claims Committee. The bill would make it so that these entities, private schools, don't have to create IEPs. I'm not sure exactly how that would work. And finally, the open enrollment bill passed such that students can go anywhere now. No tuition, but state funds would move with the child when they're placed in another school. And I could go through another, you know, 15 or 20, but I won't. But I get a bill tracker every day, and I'm sure some of you do as well. And it's worth looking at, even though there are an enormous number of bills and I don't know how either I or the legislature can keep track of them. But we need to know our opinions about these various bills, contact the appropriate people, and try to provide information where it's needed. Thanks.
Any trustee questions or comments? CNN, any public comment on the agenda item? CNN, the time is now 7:22 and we are adjourned.